All right. Good morning. Welcome to Thurston County Board of County Commissioners, Board Work Session. It's Tuesday, May 13, 2025. It's 10:36 a.m. My name is Ty Mensur, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair of Commissioners for here, Commissioner Emily Clausen Zoom, Commissioners Rachel Grant, Caroline Mahia to my left, County Manager Darren Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Josh Cummings and Jennifer Walker, and Summer Miller, our Budget Director, and her team. Public virtual attendance available on our Thurston County YouTube Channel. This is an open meeting and livestreamed. We will, we have public comment that can be received up to two hours in advance of the meeting and distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. The agenda is essentially a budget update with containment revenue options, informational. There's a catch-all for commissioner items if needed, but we're essentially going to be here for about 90 minutes working on a budget update, and I'm going to turn it to the County Manager for preliminary remarks.
Thanks so much, Chair. First and foremost, I want to thank not only the Commissioners Budget Team that's sitting here today, but really all our budget staff throughout the county, and special thanks to our Auditor Financial Services Team as well. I would, it'd be safe to say that our budget staff across the county are hard-pressed on every side, and that's because we are working still through the transition of TC Connect. Now, we plan to come back to the Commissioners and have a more in-depth conversation about where things are at and how do we move forward. About several weeks ago, Jennifer Walker, Sheri, our IT Director and key auditor staff, have begun to work on a long-term solution on how to course correct the migration issues that we've been having. But in this environment, I want to acknowledge that what would be easier for us to do is not right now. It is harder because we are working to gather the information in a system that's still working on its interconnectivity, which is normal for a large system migration, even when things go to be expected. It can take a couple of budget cycles to work out all the kinks. But in that environment, there's a lot of double-checking of work that takes place, a lot of verifying, coordinating with departments and offices, and I want to just give you a huge thank you for all the work. I see you often in the office, coming in on teams. It looks like smokestacks and all the industry going on to get to the numbers. The other component I wanted to say is that budgeting is a interactive collaboration with the entire organization, pulling information together and identifying where those trends are headed and how do we move forward. In that process, what Summer and the Budget Analysts are discovering is that there are systems that we need to build in order for us to be tracking this in real time in a better way, and that's what they're also in the process of building, and I want to commend you for that, understanding that how we look at the information, how we're working with the departments to track that information, is in the process of changing, and I think what's going to result in a better product. We're already seeing things dial in in a better way. And lastly, we are doing this approach because of the forecasts that we identified in the fall of 2024, and our commitment is to start having these conversations. This one is several weeks overdue simply because schedules didn't align, and we believe it's really important to have all the Commissioners for this presentation, as we then will look to come back in the next several weeks to continue that conversation so that we can understand what exactly we need to do in an environment where we are trending some shortfalls. So with that, be happy to answer any questions, opening questions from Commissioners, happy to turn over to Summer and the Budget Team.
Thank you. Summer Miller, Budget and Finance Manager for the Commissioners Office, and I'd like to take a moment, please, to have each of my staff members introduce themselves.
Sure. I'm Tiff West, and I'm one of the Budget Analysts. Jennifer Smith.
Coming up in a second.
So, small team, mighty team. They are gracious enough to chase every idea that I have in trying to improve the processes that we have, and they're very responsive, and I appreciate each of them very much. So, thank you. Okay, so, if we're going to get started, this is the second quarter budget presentation on the state of your budget, the general fund budget specifically. As the County Manager stated, this is a little bit overdue, but we are hopeful to get this information to you and to bring something back in the next few weeks on next steps. So.
Summer, if I may, just highlighting for the Commissioners and those watching that there was some minor adjustments made to the presentation on Slide 3. We received some good input from the Auditor Financial Services Team that we added to Slide 3, and then we switched around Slide 14 and 15. So, folks have a different version. That's what we have, and we'll be making sure that the new updated version is available.
Thank you.
Thank you, Summer.
So, Slide 1, no changes here. This will be something you will see repeated throughout the year, and as we continue to monitor the general fund and its status, basically, we're keeping an eye on Washington's general fund, general economic activity. You can see that the state collections that we reviewed before, month over month, is fluctuating some. We had some higher than forecasted. Revenue receipts in January and February, lower than forecasted in March. The cumulative total is higher than forecasted, and the future collections are expected to weaken. I want the Board to know that these updates come about mid-month, so I'm expecting one sometime tomorrow. That will be just in time for our next update for you. There's still a projected state revenue shortfall by about $845 million as of the last update of this particular slide. One thing to note is that the March forecast is the first to include assumptions regarding President Trump's policy proposals. Okay, so there's been some conversation on the differences between the Commissioners Budget Office staff and the Auditor's Financial Service Staff, essentially the differences between budget and finance. So, we thought it would be helpful to line out for you side by side the differences between the two offices and what their roles are in the county organization. The Budget Office is primarily focusing on future planning and allocating of resources to achieve the agency's objectives. So, the objectives of the Board, not only in this year that we're in, but in future years, to help you best plan with the budget that we foresee available to you. Budget also is strategically and policy-oriented, involving negotiation and approval of funds, and it usually occurs at the beginning of a fiscal period, right? We're working to give you the best information for you to adopt a budget that will begin at the beginning of a fiscal period. Auditor Financial Services is responsible for developing the primary preliminary budget and submitting that to the Board by statute. Their main focus throughout the year is on managing and controlling the funds once allocated, basically tracking the money in and the money out. They deal with the technical side, ensuring proper budget monitoring as required by statute, and financial management, reporting, and compliance, and they are also responsible for ongoing function that manages the day-to-day financial operations. In no way is this supposed to be a holistic accounting of what we do on both sides. It's to give you a general idea. The budget is setting the pathway for you to make good decisions for financial planning, and Financial Services is responsible for making sure that we're sticking to those bumpers that you set. Both functions are equally important. Budget estimates are a point-in-time presentation that allow for a broader outlook to support your policy decisions, and these numbers are pulled to develop an overview of where things are headed, and this information may be dated sometimes by a few weeks. Oftentimes, when I'm looking at data, it's to date on the day that I'm calling it, whereas the reports that you receive on a regular basis are coming from Financial Services after a month ends. So, you would receive full accounting through that month end and also year to date. Any questions? Okay, so, this is slightly different from the last review. We are still working. The Auditor Financial Services Team is working tirelessly to close out fiscal year 2024. We need this to happen in order to ensure that the budget as it's set in '25 is correct and that.
I'm sorry. I had to step out for a minute. Can we go back to the last?
Sure.
Did we talk about the point-in-time numbers and the fund balance potential difference?
We did, yes, and there were no questions.
Okay.
But if you'd like to add on?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll watch the live.
Thank you. Okay, so, I am playing with this version of what year-end estimates look like for board consumption. It's a lot of information that I'm monitoring in a very big model. This particular 2024 year-end estimate will show you the beginning fund balance, revenues by the major sources, actually, all of your revenue sources, but it'll show you what your budgeted amount was, the actuals to date, and at the very bottom, there's going to be the expenditure budget and actuals to date. And that's an estimate for us at this point in time, based on the last look, I believe it was May 6. We're estimating that your fund balance will be approximately $32 million. Yes, ma'am?
So, I just have a quick question about some of the estimates here.
Sure.
Are any of the, so like with the criminal justice sales tax and like the City of Olympia Criminal Justice and the Public Safety, the adjustments made in the legislative, like there are different policy-level adjustments that will happen on July 1st that were in the legislative budget. Are those assumed in here?
They are not. So, we are monitoring budget adoption at the state level, and we are not going to incorporate any assumptions until the budget is either signed on May 20th or not signed. So, we're waiting before we incorporate any of those.
But we'll make that, make sure that as we go through further presentations, that we'll be part, and we're tracking that. Thank you for flagging that.
My apologies. I wanted to move that. Thank you. So, I think where I left off when we came back to this slide was that the Financial Services Team is working to close out 2024, and that's going to drive a lot of factors as we move forward. One thing I want to highlight about this particular slide is if you reflect back to October 2024, when we were first signaling to you that there was a fund balance issue in the out-years, we did anticipate that the 2024 year-end fund balance would be $32 million, and in '25, it would be $18 million, and in '26, it would be $8 million. We didn't take into consideration any of the, currently, the ratified contract for the Sheriff's Office or the one that's in process. But it is, I think it's pretty amazing to see that although there are fluctuations throughout the year between the forecast from the Commissioners Budget Office and the actuals to date as they're reflected by the Auditor Financial Services Staff, we do come together closer to the end of the year, and it's not meant to create confusion, but you know, we're trying to monitor real-time changes as they occur. So, I just want to highlight that we're landing pretty close to what those estimates were in 2024.
Summer, if I may, I think what's important is in our collaboration with the Auditor's Office, currently on the fund balance for the end of the year, we're tracking a difference right now, but we're aware of that, and we understand why. As Summer mentioned, last year, around this time, we were tracking a difference as well, and those numbers came together and were pretty close, like very, very close. So, we're going to continue to do that with the Auditor Financial Services Team. We track it, and the reason, you know, high-level reason for the difference is we take a point in time to start presenting this information, and they're receiving in real time up until like today, payables, receivables, and we, what's important is if we start to see it vary significantly, then we want to dig in and understand and compare notes and compare those numbers. That's something that Summer did with Darren and will continue to do with Joe Wolfe, and congratulations, Joe Wolfe, for his promotion, but in his new role, continue to do that to make sure that we're dialing that in. I think as we've talked to the Auditor, it's important because we don't want to look like either the Budget Team or her team are not doing something right by having a different number. Those are point-in-time looks, and what's really important is at the end of the year, that those numbers match and are accurate.
So, I have a couple of questions on a couple of these areas. So, miscellaneous revenues and the other financing services are both 50% off. So, like, I see this as a, you know, both of them are kind of like the catchalls, right, of random things? And so, my, tell me if I'm wrong, and then I guess I'm just wondering, I guess I just want to understand a little bit more if we can get closer to better projections for the following year, where, so miscellaneous revenues, we thought we were going to get about $4 million, but we got nine. So, that's $5 million more than we thought we were going to get. So, we could have budgeted five more million dollars, like, or something like that. That's kind of where my brain goes. For other financing services, we got, we budgeted 2.5, we got 4.8. So, just wondering how that, explain, help me with that.
Sure. So, in the 2024 look here, the miscellaneous revenues captured interest earned by the county for the 2022 bond proceeds that we've received and we haven't spent. So, that isn't something that we want to build into the budget in this current year or in out-years because that's going to end, right? We've got to figure out where to spend the money, and we have to figure out essentially how to not earn money off of the money that we've received in bonds. That was in the amount of just under $6 million, I think it was.
The bond was a blip?
Yes. It's not something that we would want to build into our model and continue on in the future because it's not something that we can count on. And we signaled to the Board.
That way or something.
Sure.
Consider renaming, you know, just so that we could, it could be really clear to us and to the public that it's not a miscellaneous revenue fund, that it's a, you know, very specific fund that we kind of just don't touch.
It's not specific. It is receiving, as you say, it's like the catch-all, right? But one of the driving forces behind the increase or the larger amount received than what was budgeted was the interest earned from bond proceeds. So, if, I am always open to receiving feedback on how to make this better for you, right? This is.
I would just caution, though, that like, you know, I see what you're saying, Rachel, but, but like, there's a lot of these categories that are like, like intergovernmental revenues, for example. Like, there's a whole bunch of stuff in there, and it like, and it changes year to year based on what's going in there. And so, I mean, you could break this out into a point, and it wouldn't be readable. Like, this is collapsed down just so we can see it on like one page, but you can always get like, what's the breakdown of each of these, of each of these, you know, subgroups?
And I review them all.
Yeah.
I've gone down to each of those.
To your, to your point, Commissioner Grant, one of the conversations we're having at the time of the season is two components. The level of detail that then helps for future programming, and then two, making sure that the team has their arms around every single component, and there's a lot of great work being done as they kind of dig into things and then surface them so we can determine, is this a one-time? Is this going to be for a period of time, or is it ongoing? Because that's how we can get a more fine-tuned instrument that then allows you to make decisions because $5 million is, can be significant.
Sure. I guess my concern here is that this is a, this is a, this out to the public. So, you know, I guess having maybe a star with like an explanation, because if I ask that question, many others are asking that question. And so, it's just a large, you know, whenever you see something so large like that, having an asterisk or just a quick expl, you know, very easy to just go, jump is, you know, bond, you know, this, and so that we don't have, you know, people thinking, why? You know, that's a.
I appreciate that feedback. I am happy to add that to the next rendition of this presentation.
And then the other financing services, which, what's the kind of jump there?
Off the top of my head, it would be like, the three nines would capture revenues in from inter-funds transfers. I believe there would be revenues in for.
I think other interest is there too. Investment interest is there?
No, that would fall under three-sixes, yeah. So, we can do more research and get that information for you, but just off the top of my head, as I'm looking at the coding structure, I know that when the inter-funds are coming out of departments and coming in to say the IT or central services, it's received that way.
Sure. So, and I guess just another, that's the other comment would be there, that, you know, when we're thinking about budgeting, revised budget for next year, if we are going to actually receive $4 million in there, then we should be, you know, considering that. And, and so then we, because essentially, we received, you know, additional.
We've got $4 million less in property taxes, it says, so.
Yeah.
Doesn't mean we can spend it all.
I know, but, right.
Are there any other questions?
I think there's, you know, also the difference between like the ongoing funding piece and the other piece that's, because when we're looking at property tax and sales tax, and, I mean, it fluctuates year by year, and it's been, but then, when we're talking about just different revenues where it's a blip, as well as this is kind of more of a one-time occurrence rather than ongoing funding, because that also plays a major role in terms of budgeting and where we're at, because sometimes we might receive a big fund or funding from somewhere that shows that we have, but it's just that one time. It doesn't occur over the.
And having that information, really, I agree, that, like, just having that, it just helps with decision-making as well.
We will work that in to the presentations for you. Okay, so, this is a point-in-time estimate of the current, well, I should say as of May 5, general fund, fund balance. We're estimating that the beginning fund balance will be about $32.1 million. We're estimating that although the budget was adopted at 123.8 for revenues in, we are estimating we'll receive about $122 million. Expenditures were adopted at 140 million. We're estimating to spend about $137 million, leaving the ending fund balance at year-end at about $17.1 million. To the County Manager's statement, a couple slides back, you know, I need to thank Joe for seamlessly falling into the role of Darren for me. I mean, again, congratulations. He's doing a fantastic job. Darren and I had a pretty good relationship and communicating frequently on methods and tactics of how we come to fund balance and how we process the work from our own different perspectives, and Joe's been very gracious to continue those conversations with me and offer a second set of eyes and look at these, just as I had in my relationship with Darren. And also, thanks to Mary for encouraging the ongoing relationship between the two offices. I know Joe wanted me to highlight for the Board that the Board, the Financial Services Office is projecting a fund balance this year at about 22 and a half to 24 million. And the reason why I say two different figures is because on May 5, we were in communication, and reportedly, it was 22.5 million. And then on May 9, it is upped a little bit to 24 million. Again, you know, they're looking at not only the budget as it's adopted, but they're looking at real-time actuals, and they're considering any changes in assumptions and anything that's happening to adjust their particular year-end projections. As a note, the $5 million, if we stick with the 22 and a half million, the $5 million difference in fund balance does nothing to significantly change the dial on what your out-year fund balance projections look like. It has a very minimal impact on what I see as an average over the next five to 10 years at our current rate of spending and the way that our budget is currently structured.
We'll continue to work with the Auditor Financial Services Team, because again, at this point early in the year, it could be our goal to walk those through to the need.
Absolutely.
I have a quick question on this slide.
Yeah.
So, on the other financing services, our projection for the revised budget is $200,000, but in 2024, it's 2.5 million. Why the large difference?
I'd have to take a look. It could be a multitude of things. I will follow up, yes, absolutely.
I'm sorry. I didn't have your question. Can you repeat?
Last year, 2024, so, in 2024, it was, we had a budget of 2.5 million in the other finance, financing services. We actually collected 4.8. In this year's projections, we are projecting 221,000. So, I'm just trying to figure out, that's one of those ones where I'm just wanting to understand it a little bit more.
Okay. Any other questions before we move on? Okay, thank you. Okay, so, this is a revised look at year-end forecast in the graphic. I would like to point out that this is not an indication or a plan to allow future state of the county's general fund balance to run into a negative state. This is a visual aid that we designed to show you the hypothetical fund balance issues in the future if there is not some change to revenues received or expenditures. As you can see, we've got the current budget period, and the salmon and the green, that's '24 and '25. Our fund balance is declining. We are currently anticipating that '26, your fund balance will still be positive, but just at about 1.3 million, and it is declining steadily year over year, based on the current practices and the way that we project revenues and expenditures. Are there any questions? No? Thank you. So, again, we are zooming in on the 2024 and out-year look, and you can see that this graphic is showing you that our projected fund balance in '24 is the 32 million, just over 17 million in 2025. Again, still positive fund balance in 2026 at 1.3 million, and then dipping down into a negative fund balance scenario as strictly a visual aid. It is not an indication that we support the county running the budget into a negative fund balance scenario. These projections are based on updating our practices. The revenue estimates year over year are currently reflecting 3% property tax, which we adjusted in 2025. There's a 1.5% sales tax assumption, adjusted from prior 3 and 4%. We're not showing any increases currently in any of the other areas of revenue expectations. These expenditures do, let me scratch that first bullet, my apologies. These expenditures do have a 3% placeholder currently. That does not include the Thurston County Sheriff's Office Patrol. It does incorporate the recently ratified salary figures and wage increases from bargaining. There's a 2.5% increase for benefits, 2% across the board in supplies and services, 5% is assumed for inter-fund increases, and a 3.5% reversion. I have been playing with a reversion, and I think we're going to land about 4.1% right now for year-end, but I'm going to stick with 3.5 in this graphic for now. We have had some conversations with the Auditor's Office about a potential 5%. So, that quick blush, I still see 3 and 1/2, but I'm going to dig a little further back and see if I can true up our difference in reversion amount there. This is also showing you, I'm sorry, that the, the bottom right is showing you the projected shortfall and then the actual fund balance as it's reflected here. So, we have about a $15 million shortfall in '25, almost $16 million in '26, and that is ongoing. So we have about a fifteen million dollar shortfall in twenty-five, uh, almost sixteen million in twenty-six, and that is ongoing. The average, um, when I looked yesterday evening, I believe was just at fifteen point seven million. And that is, it's steady between thirteen and fifteen. And sometimes it dips a little higher, sometimes it dips a little low. So if we wanted to really broaden it, we could say twelve to sixteen million dollars.
We understand that the, the accuracy of that is really important to the final decisions that are made. We're not glossing over that. Because we know that for the county's general fund support departments, the difference of four, five million dollars is significant. Ongoing operations. This is not to say these are bulletproof numbers and are never going to change. It's simply trending in the out-years based on what we're, we're charting and some of the, the indicators that are changing. The, the goal that we are building here with our, um, commissioner's budget team and how it interacts with departments is we need to be monitoring this month by month, quarter by quarter. Because we are in an environment where, uh, revenues and expenses are changing. For example, we're walking through what the decisions at the federal level and how those impacts are being had on the state and how that's being passed through to, let's say, a department like Public Health and Social Services. So when they learn that a funding source is going to go away, then our team starts to react to that to figure out what does that mean to the operations level so that we can quickly get to you, which we probably do next week on Public Health and Social Services. Because the funding source of, say it again, Josh.
The ELC.
Stands for?
The Epidemiology Laboratory Fund. I can't remember what this stands for, but it's essentially the old COVID funds.
Right, but learning that, that those are going away and that. That has a direct impact on the staffing and operations of Public Health and Social Services. We have to be in a place where we're being nimble to respond to those things. And so that's the environment. That's why I said, you know, that it's kind of a hard-pressed situation. Because we then, our, our goal is to quickly get with the commissioners to talk about those operational impacts and what it's going to mean to the community. But then working in an environment where the state is being given very short timelines by the federal, um, government. And then that means we get even shorter timeframes for communication. And so we're working with HR, um, potentially what does this mean for, um, you know, positions represented? And we're walking all of that through in real time right now.
Yeah, so I, I, um, I mean, I think this is great. Um, I mean, I think I, I'm glad that you explained that, you know, um, that we have, what we have here is, you know, um. We're trying to set up a system that will prepare us for creating adjustments as they come because we have a very fluctuating environment. Um, and, you know, I just want to, you know, cause I, I did have, I have a few concerns. Cause I am, we also have negative, but we also have positive, right? And I think that, um, you know, I think I, um, want to make sure that we're also reflecting that, that we've got. I'm really excited about our state budget because we've got quite a few things that are going to give us an influx. And, um, which will then reduce, you know, the pressure on our, on our general fund state. Or, I mean, I always think of general fund, it's general fund. Um, but you know, that, that as we, um, you know, and I'm really interested in being involved in, you know, those conversations of as we lose COVID, our P dollars and we, um, potentially lose federal dollars, um, for things. You know, how can we be creative and pull money from other, maybe not general fund? You know, how do you use these other funds to, to backfill? And I think that the state has, um, you know, created a few bills and, and I, I went through the appropriations bill. And we really find to, you know, really looked at it to see, you know, what are the opportunities for us to be able to use money from the state to be able to backfill some of those lost in federal dollars? And I think we have a lot of opportunities that we can use, so. Um, so I, I really do appreciate that you guys are setting up a, a system like this. But it definitely will fluctuate with those dollars in here, especially with such a small budget. So, well, I mean.
And I understand.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and we agree that there are positives, um, with the state budget that we're going to factor in. And, and then, you know, we're monitoring that, what the situation, um, or communication and really why we're, we're doing this early is because this isn't a net positive. Where as things balance out, we have to actually talk about where do we go from here with our departments? And we wanted to create a little bit more space and time. So as we build in the state, that'll adjust it, which will be very positive for us. But then we're also going to have to walk through with the commissioner's direction to staff as to how do we engage the offices and departments and what does this mean to them? Um, and as the board's requested, which we'll come back. What are other funding revenue sources that are either councilmatic or, um, have to go out to the voters that we'll be looking at? Um, for board consideration discussion.
Okay, um, so this is to provide some context for, um, the fund balance and cash reserves. So the fund balance in this exercise is, is intended to measure financial resources currently and forecasted to be available. Um, as a reminder, the county commissioner's budget team is monitoring fund balance throughout the duration of twenty twenty-five quite frequently to ensure that the board has sufficient information to make prudent decisions regarding the general fund in the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven biennial budget and beyond. Um, Thurston County has adopted two resolutions as guiding principles to ensure best practices are followed. Uh, one is resolution fifteen nine thirty-two, adopting budget and fiscal principles for Thurston County. Uh, I want to highlight that A is strive for a two-month ending fund balance. Um, currently that fund balance target is twenty-four million. It does increase slightly in out-years, but it's a, it's a good number for us to aim for. Um, the second resolution is sixteen oh one oh, uh, relating to minimum fund balance and reserves and general fund and establishing a budget stabilization fund. So cash flow reserve should be set at twelve million and the current fund balance in our budget stabilization fund is four million dollars.
Can I add to that? I think that, I, I don't want to misquote the language, but I think there's another piece in that resolution that speaks to a balance, like basically if we're short of the target, then we're to we're to pass a balanced budget essentially. I mean, we, we really haven't had to worry about that the last few years because we've had this huge cash balance. So it's kind of hasn't come into the, but back when we passed it, we were more where we are now.
Right.
And I think that could be something that weaves into the conversation this year. Because we're going to be, sounds like by either, by everybody's estimation, at least a little bit short of the two-month target. In which case, we committed to at that point presenting a balanced budget. I think that's in there.
It is, yes.
State that, yeah, correct.
Thank you.
Which is an important, um, component. You know, that's, um, based on resolution, then that's what's guiding the work of the budget office.
And so going back to like your first, you know, slide where you're like, okay, twenty twenty-four, we. We spent, you know, fourteen million dollars. More than, and, and, and part of that was by design, but that can't continue. So we're just going to have to.
I will work that into a future, um, presentation.
It's just good for everyone. Yeah, like I say, it was, we worked really hard on that back in twenty nineteen with commissioners. Hutchings and Commissioner, uh, Edwards and Robin Campbell and took an old resolution and we updated it and we debated it like line by line. So I mean, and there was a very robust conversations about it. So, and like I say, a lot of pieces of it. We've been in this weird COVID environment where like a lot of the things that were in there, we just haven't had to like grapple with. But we're back to needing to grapple with it and I'd like the board to be aware of what was in there because it was, we worked really hard to put it in there.
Thank you. Okay, the next slide. Uh, so Thurston County's general fund structural deficit. So we're facing two significant challenges at this time. Um, production and revenue is what we're projecting, um, with an increasing demand for services. So this has placed some considerable pressure on our ability to maintain a high standards of service for the community. That which they expect and deserve. Um, the trend is not sustainable without changes to our current spending and funding model. And as the gap between the available resources and service needs continues to grow. If there isn't an increase in revenues, we're going to face a steadily decline in service, steadily declining service quality and possibly reductions of key programs. And I think we all are very much aware of that. Um, to address this challenge and ensure that we can continue to meet the needs of the community without compromising service quality, we need to consider additional revenue options. One would be a levy lid lift. Um, that would allow us to secure the necessary funding to sustain and enhance the services that we provide. And I think honestly, without this increase, we may be faced with difficult decisions, including scaling back programs and reducing service levels. Uh, the team and I do plan to come back to the board, um, at a later date. Hopefully in the next few weeks after board's direction to discuss all available options to you. Okay, so the general fund structural, uh, Thurston County's general fund budget is, uh, largely property tax and sales tax. It's about eighty-one million or sixty-six percent of our general fund budget. Um, we're seeing that Washington State and other jurisdictions continue their strategic responses to declining revenues and a historic budget shortfall. Early and frequent information sharing provides the board more time to consider impacts of decisions that will be made. Uh, timely direction from the board allows staff within your commissioner's budget team to research and provide next steps. And, you know, our commitment to you is that when and if the future landscape of our budget position changes, we will present that to you to provide you the most time possible to change courses.
Summer, can I, before you move on, I just kind of want to just. It's not just Thurston County's general fund that is largely property and sales tax. It is the thirty-nine counties across our state who is relying on these antiquated form of funding that has put all of us in this situation where we're currently in. Um, and thirty-nine counties are facing huge declines in revenues and are facing cuts. Uh, they're all going through cut exercises. And it was one of the reasons, uh, the Association of Counties put six different revenue proposals for the legislator to consider this year. Um, none of which moved ahead. Um, but. I, I just, you know, it's not just a Thurston County and it's not because of decisions the board has made. It's just the story that thirty-nine counties are currently facing at this time. Uh, both western, uh, side of the state as well as eastern side of the state. It doesn't matter how small or how big the county is, they're all going through, through the same issues.
That's a great point, Commissioner. And what we see locally is, you know, in our backyard, we see some of our cities within the county experience the same situation. And as I talk to colleagues, um, some are at the point where they're having to actually reduce and then reduce again. And, um, and cut the general fund and then we see the situation taking place at the state. So I think that's important to highlight that it wasn't that Thurston County did something fundamentally wrong. Um, this was, as Commissioner Minster has said on a couple of occasions, coming, uh, into the pandemic and then out of the pandemic with some one-time revenue and very inconsistent and unstable outlook as to how the economy was going to respond. And so we are kind of strapped into that roller coaster ride along with, um, other jurisdictions. Not only just in the state of Washington, but other jurisdictions, uh, throughout the nation. I was, um, talking to one of the professors of the National Public Administration Program at Evergreen College. And he, he asked me if I knew how many billions of dollars that the county of Los Angeles was going to have to cut from their budget. And so when we look at it in its size and scope, folks are having to make cuts across the board.
Thank you. That is, um, a very good thing to point out. Thank you. We are not alone. So possible solutions, um. None of these are, are. We're not telling you what to do, like if we're being perfectly frank, right? These are possible solutions, budget containment. Um, you'll see in the following slides, there's potential for savings between eight hundred thousand to maybe two and a half million. And that's continuing with no growth and diminished services. Um, a budget reduction exercise, you know, we're still hovering there in the thirteen to fifteen million dollar range. It's about ten percent. Uh, revenue increase options, which our best bet is potentially a levy lid lift, but there are other options available that might move the needle just a little bit.
And all this is, is again, these are not hard dialed-in numbers. This is just so that you can get a sense of, um, our scoping. We looked at budget containment. The team believes that we could try to aim for eight hundred, two point five million. We can talk a little bit about what that would entail. And then the budget reduction, again, based on what we're looking at as a fund balance and some of the projections, that could be that number, it could be, um, several million dollars less. Um, the reason we have the levy lid lift is not because that's what staff are saying, that's our preferred approach. We're just going to use that for the sake of exercise, um, and conversation about what additional revenue would look like. Because when you look at a ten percent cut, in light of the fact that the last build-out of your two-year budget, you already took some cuts as well. It, within the general fund, uh, departments, there's not a lot of discretionary, um, ability. So we're not sitting on areas where we can, oh, this is not important or that's not essential or, um, that's grown over time and isn't really valuable. I think it's important for our organization, but also the public to understand. Commissioners have been addressing this over the last several years. You went through several different cut scenarios, departments that had to, well, citizen county managers who went to department heads at this table. Uh, had to walk through that as well as our offices and department heads who are, who are with us at that time. So we're at a place where that's ten percent on top of what was already done in times past. And that's substantial to our operations. It is to be a major impact to what we do day in and day out here in the county.
Thank you. Okay, so we're going to talk about potential budget containment pathways, um, for Thurston County. And I'd like to highlight again that these are approximate savings. Um, many of these figures were kind of gleaned out, um, in preparation for a late March, early April presentation. So general fund budget containment proposals right now would be, uh, to freeze non-essential hiring and spending. Restrict equipment purchases to those necessary for basic agency functions and health and safety. That could look like about two and a half million dollars. Um, reduce travel, that could look like about two hundred thousand dollars at that point in time across all general fund budgets.
These are estimates.
They are, they are most definitely estimates and they are estimates based on a point in time that has now passed by several weeks, so.
These are estimates before we've had any conversations with general fund departments or offices. And we want to make sure that's clear for the audience that's watching internally. That we have, are, are looking at just again, a rough order of magnitude and not dialed-in numbers. Where we can say we can pull a theater here and here. Because we, we wouldn't do that without having conversations with the departments and offices.
I'm just going to ask a real quick question. And that's necessary, uh, you're saying that we, these are just things that we might do if we had to reduce the budget?
Sure. So in the last presentation at the end of February, the direction that I received was that the board would like us to, or me specifically, to go through and create a list of areas of potential savings. That was a direction that I was trying to adhere to, um, without, um, specifically highlighting. As accounting managers said, we're not, we're not indicating that you should take any of these actions. This is in response to the board's request.
Yeah, and.
Okay.
Yeah, knowing that with the, um. With the way the budget is, is outlined, there's going to be some action we have to take. This is just an overview of what the savings would look like per the commissioner's saying, well. What does that even equate to?
But if we can find the money in other areas, we do not have to do this.
Absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Okay, so, um, we also are, um, listing here to evaluate programs that were implemented, uh, since twenty twenty that may be not fully implemented, including maybe any pilot programs, not sure if there are any of those out there. Uh, evaluate programs originally funded one time with federal COVID dollars, um, or any other federal funding. Evaluate every funding agreement partnership with outside jurisdictions or agencies to determine a level of required support. Um, evaluate discretionary and mandated programs. Uh, the last cost analysis that we could locate was in twenty fifteen. Um, we have some questions, you know, are the services? You know, are the services that were listed, are they still discretionary? Have any been added or reduced? Have any of the discretionary areas been changed to mandatory services? In the mandatory service realm, have any been added or reduced? Is there a gap between the service level that we currently provide and what is mandated by law? And what does that look like? And again, these are just ideas in response to the board's request. We have not dedicated staff time to working into these figures or any of these ideas that will be at your discretion, in your direction. There's a position control element here, you know, we're estimating roughly five-point-three million in total salary and benefit savings, but we need to do a lot more research on that. You know, we need to see which offices and departments that is in, which of those are providing mandatory twenty-four-seven services, et cetera, reducing incremental spending, and then eliminating unused capital assets.
When you say position control, do you mean like eliminating vacant positions?
Yes.
Yeah, that's why we have to look at the mandated versus discretionary, because you just can't, not all general fund positions are equal. You just can't start yanking, but there'd have to be an approach to that.
So containment for any combination of these could net eight hundred to three million, you know, two and a half to three million dollars. The savings are only impactful if there's no immediate future growth. Each of the above potential options will reduce level of service across county offices and departments. And every option here will require dedicated staff time to research the impacts, to include the costs, the statutory requirements, and a level of service. We are committed and dedicated to take any direction you provide to us as a team and research these things out. And we have a lot on our plates right now, you know? We've got amendment and other things that we're focused on, but we will make the time. So just putting that out there. Do you have any questions about this particular slide? Do you want to add anything? No? Okay. Oops, did I jump ahead? No, I didn't. Okay, so potential budget containment pathways for Thurston County. On the left, you will see the 2025 adopted budgets for each of the offices and departments. General fund, other general fund containment considerations, and these again are not fully baked ideas, but you know, maybe some central services charge programs, can they be reduced? Or would the action drive up other central service costs? Are there offsets to savings? Does the reduction to one program move the problem and cost to another program or agency? Overlapping programs, does a reduction cross programs and/or agencies? Timing of savings, amount of time implementation would take, that's a really important consideration. Statutory changes required to implement the savings, and if so, what those changes are. Looking at closing the gap on general fund reversion, you know, removing the reliance of a reversion into the budget forecasting, and then what certain operations are statutorily required. So the whole, we'll say in this particular slide is sixteen million, but you know, the thirteen to fifteen, twelve to sixteen, general fund office and department budgets indicated on the left are full budget authority, and the portion of those budgets that are considered discretionary are significantly less, right? This is their entire general fund budget, salaries, benefits, services, supplies, any payments to bonds, and interfund or internal service rate costs are all incorporated here. So when we strip away the things that need to be paid for, what's left is much smaller. Are there any questions? Okay, so revenue options, sources and options for new revenues for Washington counties is property tax. Everyone here knows that they're limited by one percent annually. If we wanted to change that, it requires a voter approval to reset the lid. In that case, you would have a temporary or permanent lid lift. You could look at a one-year, a multi-year, or six-year lid lift. There will be examples on the following page. We can look at increases to sales and use taxes, lodging taxes, real estate excise taxes, and other excise taxes, state shared and federal revenues, departmental fees, charges, and reimbursements, other revenue sources, special taxing districts, and transportation benefit districts. Yes, ma'am?
Nope, it's right at the last line. Strategized and mapped out. I was like, when are we going to have that meeting?
Probably thinking about two, maybe three weeks, we come back and go in detail and talk about the implications of what that would mean to our county.
I think this would be like a great planning session meeting, because I think it just needs, it just needs a lot of like discussion and time to kind of, instead of a work session where we're constrained. That would just be my request, recommendation.
I would love to see an analysis on this of each of these with the potential revenue for like sixty, however many years, and like, and then, and also the, what they could be used for. Because some of them could be limited to only certain specific things, and others can be, you know, distributed amongst everything. So that would help us to be able to make some decisions.
I mean, you guys know this, but there's like, I know Rob had spreadsheets.
We have that spreadsheet.
And it's got all that information in it.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen, I've seen those too, yeah.
So it's there. Definitely bring that back for, dial that in and give space and time so we can have that coming.
So this particular slide is showing revenue options of levy lid lift. So there, these are all voter-approved, and obviously, we would need to work with the assessor's office to vet out all the specifics if this is a decision the board wants to take moving forward. On the top left-hand corner, you have a single-year temporary levy lid lift. To the right of that is a single-year permanent levy lid lift. The bottom left is a multi-year temporary levy lid lift, and then to the right of that is a multi-year permanent levy lid lift. You might hear me interchange permanent with six-year. They essentially mean the same thing. In these options, if you do a single-year temporary lid lift, essentially, you would ask the voters to increase the highest lawful levy amount, and currently, we're collecting, I think, seventy-five cents per thousand of assessed valuation. An example would be if the board wanted to ask for a dollar per thousand, it would reset the levy amount, and then each subsequent year after that. After the period of time up to six years of this increased collection, then you essentially would drop off the clip and go back to the highest lawful levy amount prior to implementing the lid lift, okay? And that's the same for any temporary measure.
This is all just for?
Exercise.
Exercise, and this is not in any way detailed analysis or fine point accurate numbers. This is just kind of going through really the understanding of size and scope of what the county would need in order not to go into a containment or major reduction steps because of the time, the amount of funding that's needed. And then what I'll lastly say is, we're in an environment where because of past year cuts, a lot of our general fund relied departments are asking and needing additional resources. So this is an environment where we're hearing from folks that there's positions and things that they need to build out in order to do the service that they are either required to do or no needs to be done. This organization has grown as well, and so with some of the internal service departments that are halfway built and need to continue to be built out, like our human resource department, like our IT department. And that's not to mention the offices that have statutory requirements to get work done, who are struggling to get some of this work done and are asking HR for positions on a regular basis. I say that because the context is, there's this shortfall. Organizationally, we're not at a place where we've been sitting on lots of excess where it's easy just to cut things that really don't matter to us. We're at a place right now.
Commissioner Grant, I have your hand.
Yeah, and I'm going to chop this up as the new girl, but what, why is there two different, why, why would you want to do a temporary? I guess maybe, maybe I'm asking my seatmates, like why did they create it so that you, you know, temporary levy lid lift versus why wouldn't you just do it forever? You know, I mean, is that just, is that like a state law thing that they, you know?
These are options, right?
Like, we're, is that like a?
We would decide what we were going to ask the voters to approve.
It's just a tool, you get to decide, and it's really, I think, would come down to what you think the voters are willing to support. Sometimes an indefinite one versus a set timeframe.
Right, so, or, I mean.
This work depends on what you're, like, you know, if you were trying to like get a project over the finish line, you know, you could see it being more limited, but that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about just basic financing of all the basic services. So to me, if you're going to go this route and you're going to make that case, it should probably be a permanent situation, because that's the situation we're in.
Thurston County is growing.
Yes.
It just, it hurts my heart to think about cutting anything. We need more services. We need additional services for our jails. We need additional mental health services for our people. We need our staff to feel supported. We need them to feel like they have a living wage.
Yes.
We went from three to five for a reason. And, and so it, you know, for me, this is an easy thing, that we need to figure out how to get more revenue and for, and sustain it for many more years, so.
The next slide.
Go on.
Because I think the next slide shows the number.
Yeah. So this is being presented as an exercise only. The maximum levy rate for general fund is a dollar eighty per thousand of assessed valuation. Thurston County collects currently seventy-five cents per thousand, capped at one percent. So the total tax in 2025 without the road levy shift is just over forty-eight million. With the road levy shift, it is just under fifty-three million.
Reason if I could, the reason we put down with and without road levy shift is we understand that road levy shift was to deal with a context where we were looking to minimize the impact of the cuts on other departments. However, that has a direct impact to projects, it has a direct impact to conditions on the road. Jennifer, I don't know if you want to speak to that at all, I didn't ask you to, but it's a real thing that we have to wrestle through, because I don't believe it's sustainable long-term.
Agreed, and you heard just this morning, an emergency repair that's needed because we have a culvert that's failed, and that now is going to commit the county to millions of dollars for an upcoming project. And then we'll need to look for funding for that, but I would say that we know that ongoing and routine maintenance is less expensive than complete rebuilds. And so as we diminish the funding to be able to do that, we are increasing the cost of maintaining our road system, because we're having to rebuild it, and we'll be able to do less, because it costs more.
And I'm not saying that those comments in any way to say that decision commissioners have made or even future considerations are in any way negative or bad. I'm just saying, when we look at, if we can go after additional funding, it allows us to, I wanted you to see what, what there could be, what's the possibilities, but also what we should move back in place if we're getting that additional funding so that we have programs fully funded and they can do the work and be prepared to respond to, as Matt said, the aging infrastructure that's happening really all over the U.S.
So the last two are examples of voter-approved measures. So in this hypothetical environment, the second one would be a levy lid lift authorizing a permanent multi-year increase at, say, a dollar twenty-seven per thousand, based on the 2025 assessed valuation. So what that does is with voter approval, our seventy-five cents per thousand would increase to a dollar twenty-seven. And that increase, take the five percent out of your minds for a minute, right? Because in my mind, I was thinking we would do a permanent multi-year increase for six years, the maximum number of years, an estimated five percent increase year over year after the first year of collection. So the first year would be eighty-one million dollars. The second year, if it was a five percent increase under this scenario, would be eighty-five point three-two, nine-two million. In '28, it would be eighty-nine point six-six-two million. And these are hypothetical numbers. We'd have to work with the assessor's office, because once you reset the highest lawful levy, then we're dealing with the whole not exceeding that, you know, and with growth, assessed valuation's going up, generally, the rate of collection is going down. So that's, that's just something that I'll need to work through their team with, but this is a rough estimate of what you would see if we had voter approval at a dollar twenty-seven per thousand. The one percent increase for 2026 county levy would put us at forty-eight million, forty-eight point five million for next year. That's an estimation right now. So that's thirty-two million dollars more to support your operations.
If you think about the thirty-two million dollars more, that addresses the twelve to sixteen million dollar shortfall. But then, and I get that this is, you know, a very optimistic view, but to your comment, Commissioner Grant, that then would give capacity to address the growth that Thurston County has, is experiencing in our ability to serve, serve different aspects of the public.
So the last example is, you know, at max collection. So the purpose of these two is to show you that you're not bound to go to the voters for max amount. You can strategize the dollars that you need to support the county operations in the immediate future and out years, and determine what a sweet spot is, if you will, right, to go to the voters. Also, to address the question you had previously, it makes sense to ask for a permanent multi-year levy lid lift, but oftentimes, we have to prove ourselves and gain the confidence, right, of the public. So it's not uncommon to consider going for a temporary lid lift with very specific goals and objectives that the board would want to meet to prove, right, that you're, that we're taking care of our budget in the most appropriate way. So that, that's something to consider, that you might have to take two bites at that apple. It might be a multi, multifaceted approach, if you will. I think it's really important that the board consider these options. I believe that there are other offices and departments in the county that also feel that way. Are there any questions on this? Okay, so staff recommendations for next steps. We recommend to take the status quo approach, the First Amendment of fiscal year 2025, and to begin to work with general fund offices and departments on budget containment strategies for board review and discussion in future meetings to discuss impacts of lost revenue and grants on department operations, and to come back with a presentation to review all potential revenue options in detail with known timelines within the next several weeks.
For the last item, we can also add, in overview, how all the additional revenue in the state budget initiated. Should we do that?
Thank you for these recommendations, Summer. I'm wondering, so I have concerns, right? And I'm, I'm wondering if, just based on TC Connect, based on just kind of the state uncertainty, just different areas, would it be best, instead of going through a biennium budget, to approach it more as a yearly, a one-year budget instead? And it was something that was considered when we were going through COVID, and, you know, that switched from a biennium to a one-year, just to kind of be able to deal with the uncertainty. And I'm wondering, is that maybe something we can do, just so, you know, the main impact is in, not 2026, but it's in the year 2027, right? And so as we're just moving along, I'm wondering, is that going to be better just with TC Connect? I mean, like, just seeing, right, that, you know, we're not, still not able to close out year 2024 because of the constraints with it, and. because of the constraints with it and.
It is, it's something that we've kicked around in, in our conversations. It isn't something that I've brought to the county manager, if I'm completely honest. Um, we are open to receiving that direction.
Research that with the auditors team. If you did it during COVID, then there's a framework for that. I think what that would allow is to say, we're gonna focus here and then get through twenty five into twenty six and see, does revenue change? It also allows this board time to really partner on what the strategy for increased revenue is, because I think that's where this picture is, is developing to show that we need increased revenue. And, uh, in order to sustain the current level of operation. But if there's a desire to grow, then that's even more motivation to do that.
I would be interested for that option to be, um, looked at, you know, and and see if it, you know, for me, if it helps and, and see if it makes us a little bit more nimble.
You can definitely do the research. Um, Chair, I see Commissioner Fornier's hand up.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Fornier, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I'm thinking about a lot. I, I've been quiet the whole time trying to take this all in. Um, there's a lot. Uh, it, I'm just trying to think out loud. There's, i- i- you know, it's, it's all about, it's all about balance. But there's, there's an element of the recommendations that, that are element that I see missing from recommendations. And it's kind of like, and, and it's, it's hard to quantify, but I, I feel like, you know, kind of impediments to growth and, uh, impediments to economic development need to be considered. And we need to have as a part of our recommendations or as our policy framework, like a strategic, uh, look towards economic development. Because, you know, we need to consider cuts, right, budget containment. Uh, if we're gonna be talking about increasing taxes, we, we can't just tax our way out of this and cut our way out of this. We also have to have, uh, we, we also have to grow our way out of this. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm excited about bringing in a new economic development management person. Uh, I really want, I'm excited that we have as a part of our strategic goals, economic development and making sure that we have a, a clear strategy uh, where, you know, this is, this is something that's con- considered in, you know, kind of in how we do things philosophically, because we, we, we have to allow for growth to grow revenue. It's not just about taxing new revenue. It's about creating new revenue opportunities and about creating new industries. And, and that's where the, the, you know, the growth can occur in a budget as well. It's where, it's where it needs to occur.
Okay. Thank you. What's next?
Um, we would just like the board's, um, you know, thumbs up direction on these items. When we look at the first item, status quo approach, the first amendment, perspective right now is it doesn't make sense to add to the general fund demand expense before we understand if we're gonna be successful or even get direction to seek new revenue. So it would be good to keep it status quo and what that means is no additional general fund request moving forward. Obviously, we would bring offices, still bring things forward to you. We would still make that available for your awareness. We wouldn't, uh, keep that from you. But, uh, our desire right now is to really get our hands around general fund and not let the amendment increase, because that's only gonna make the issue, ongoing issue even more pronounced. And the others we get working on as well.
Commissioner Claus?
Do we have an idea on what requests would be coming forward for the first amendment? Do we have any requests that have been discussed yet or that have been put through? And then like, when, when is the first amendment, um, deadline passed?
So the first amendment period is closed. The team is reviewing, doing their first round of reviews. Hopefully I get it in my hands today. We're actually gonna be presenting, I believe, next week to the board, the first review of the amendment one. And it's, the schedule's been compressed and nothing has been delivered to you yet again because of all of the issues and challenges that we're experiencing with TC Connect, right? So we're doing the best that we can, but we're, we're pulling it together for you.
Okay.
It's usually late June that we approve it. Is that, is that a deadline that we have to do?
Yes, we're hoping, um.
Before summer, if we break
June seventeenth.
Summer recess. Now, if it takes TC Connect, um, several more weeks to do the closeout, then we will revise and adjust. But they'll be able to round up all the requests.
Okay.
So I saw Commissioner Fornier's thumb up.
Could we maybe like, I mean, I, I'm ready to give a thumbs up on this for the most part. I'm wondering if we could make the direction for the first, um, bullet on the status quo approach after we hear that briefing next week? Just, I mean, I, if things come forward in the first amendment, like if we get requests that seem urgent and we give direction now to stay with the status quo approach, I would just, I think it might be prudent to, um, hear what those recommendation or requests are before we
Well, can I jump in? So you, you said, like, we used to sometimes with Robin talk about like, like the instructions that we were gonna give out before requests were even made. You know, we would say like, the board's gonna direct staff to basically send out the memo, you know, you, don't, don't ask for this or don't ask for that or this isn't happening. We're past that point now, right? You're saying the request window is already closed.
That is correct. So the budget instructions for an amendment process were delivered or made available to offices and departments, right? And in those instructions, it states that this isn't the, the time um, in the budget year to put in requests for, say, new FTEs or reclassifications. But we also made it incredibly clear that we are not here to stand in the way of any of the requests that are brought forward. That is the, uh, the discretion of the board. So you will, I'm sorry.
Part of the reason for the direction, um, is in the current process, HR does a lot of work to vet all of this. And if we have a major budget, budget issue, um, I would, and I understand that the board needs to see those requests. I really don't want HR doing that work until the board gives direction because it's, it, it's a waste of their resources at this point. So we can bring those requests, um, kind of in, in concept as we have them, and then the board can give direction if they want to. And then we can go and vet.
I, I just, I was, from what I was hearing, I don't think there's a problem. Commissioner Claus is gonna see the requests.
He'll see the requests.
And we'd have to basically say, oh, that's super important. You gotta, and we can deal with that next week.
Which happens every time.
Yeah, that, that, so I think you'll see what you need to see.
Okay.
In terms of what people are asking for. Does that make sense? You got?
This is my first time even understanding this process, so I don't even
So every, there's a, there's a couple of budget amendments and
Yeah, people asking for additional funding.
Just such, well, I mean, like I say, it's, we've had ones that have expanded and ones that were like, we were really trying to narrow them in. It's really supposed to just be for like, oh, here's a new grant that came. It's really just supposed to make like minute adjustments in the, you know, in, in the middle of a budget cycle. Of course, depending on the situation at hand, people sometimes ask for more stuff than just those minute adjustments. So, so we used to go through a spreadsheet, you know, and hopefully it wasn't, you know, a hundred pages. It was more like, you know, twenty pages or, or, or twelve pages, you know? And we would go through all the requests and just, and budget staff, budget team would give us a recommendation. Hey, this is just a, this is really a true amendment. Like Robin would say, this is just a, a, a true amendment, appropriator amendment. It's just a adjustment for some new revenue that came in or an additional expenditure. And then she would highlight for us, this is something new. You got, of course, it's our latitude to, to say okay to it, but she would highlight for us kind of, this is outside the parameters of a typical amendment, but, you know, here's what the ask is. And we would debate that and look at the reasoning for it and go through that kind of meticulously. Some amendment processes were pretty streamlined. Other ones were kind of blew up and were really difficult over the years. Um, in this case, where we know we've got a tough budget, you know, situation coming up, it makes, this is what kind of what I think the first, it's kind of confusing when you say status quo approach. What you mean by that is, is essentially not to entertain, not to let it get into new areas of, of, of requests. Like try to really keep.
Yeah, yes. And so, um, yeah, I get that. So it was like maintenance level and policy. So you want things to stay at maintenance level and not act new policy level. Um, the, so I think that's weird. What I'm, I guess one of the things I'm asking is, so what's the all of the things that we approved during our, like earlier today, we approved things during our meeting. Um, are we going to approve them next week? Why the diff, what, I mean, let's talk about that.
That's what we're dialing in because there's an amendment process.
Right.
And, and some of the amendment process is technical. It's to clean up, um, uh, the accounting component, uh, making sure funds are, are, um, accurate. And I'm gonna just pivot real quick to say, in this environment with TC Connect, we, we most likely will be doing a second amendment because we have to do the closeout and have time to make it sure everything matches. But we are working through the process where in this, my, my perspective is we have the amendments, but then also things come through in real time. And so, um, we've been talking about what the correct process and flow for that is in this organization because folks are used to both. But the day in and day out, or rather the month in and month out of meetings does add to the general fund when you're reclassing. Right now, what we have is if there's a gen, if there's a new position or a reclassification that's general fund and it can't be supported with new revenue or it's, then we're bringing those, um, specifically for your consideration.
So, cause, cause like when Stephen Drew came forward and needed us to make that adjustment, it's a, I mean, he needed something done for his office.
Right.
And so, and we approved it. And that would be something that could be done during the year. But this is just a whole bunch of things that need to be done at one time and we are adjusting them, uh, for, so it's just cleanup. Okay.
Kind of like cleanup, yeah. I mean, in, a lot of time in those things that happen during the, during the interim, you'll hear people usually say, well, I'll absorb it for this year. And that's what, and, and, I mean, again, it's gonna cost us money at the, you know, at the next budget. But from a technical standpoint, that's how, they don't need a budget amendment or whatever, right? Because they're gonna absorb it, at least for the currently budgeted cycle. Then it gets added in and we fund it for the future.
That's like how it gets snuck in and our budget quietly gets larger.
Right, right.
Like, you know, it's, and, you know, it takes discipline. And then they come in, you know, or folks come in mid-year and they, you know, they try to make an ask because it's a strategic request and they can kind of, they're, they're all, you know, everybody's playing a game to try to make their budget work.
Go ahead, Summer.
I was gonna say to that point, yes, you know, um, when requests come forward and they're asking or making the statement that it can be absorbed or the board is directing offices or departments to absorb the cost of that FTE, that's not ongoing forever. You know, when we are truing up for the next biennial or the next one-year budget cycle, whatever it is, HR does a level of work to then adjust the funding for those positions. And that's coming, if they're general fund, it's coming from general fund to, to increase the budgets to support those employees ongoing. So the period of absorption is short. And oftentimes, um, in my short experience, may be forgotten, you know, and not intentionally. But so we're, those are things we're considering as we work through these processes um, as a group and then with the county manager to, to lay out the best possible path forward to try to create some tighter bumpers for you.
Okay, just very different than. I know you all work for the state, so everyone understands that I'm not following along because it's very, 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 very different than normal budgeting processes.
And one of the things that is different in your role is that you're approving the budget to start up, but then you're also approving the contracts. So they come through with contracts. I'm looking, I pulled up the agenda for this morning and there was a housing contract for nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. They're not, not, in that case, they're not asking for additional funding for it. They're just asking to approve the contract to spend the money that was already appropriated for that. So that's some of the difference in what you see in your meetings with, I want to spend this money. And the confusion.
It's the specific thing of what we already allow them to spend with their budget.
Based on comments from, from this board, we are doing the research to figure out what's the, what's, what are we allowed to streamline so we can bring that back as process improvement? Because some, some items like RFPs, it was, you have to approve to go out to an RFP where I'm, I'm not used to that where I come from. So, but we're, I'm making sure that the team is crosswalking me from, this is what's required and we're working with the CO's office. But it'll be our desire that as we get things in place, we can start coming back with streamlined approaches of, we do it this way, but here's some options and then let you as a commission discuss what you're comfortable with.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and I, you know, I just will say for the record that in the five different public agencies I worked as in a budget role, we did not, when someone was, received their budget, they did not have to ask for permission to spend it. And, uh, they only worked with budget staff to adjust it when they needed to adjust it up. So policy level adjustments, that would be an amendment. So that's why it's very confusing to me why we have to, you know, approve every single thing. And so I, you know, I hope we can think about, uh, you know, improving our processes in the future.
Good deal. Okay, so does, we, you guys have what you need from the board?
Yes, that was great direction and we look forward to, the next conversation is happening fairly quickly for summer break. Thank you, budget team. Understand that, again, what would normally be easier to do, we are working through the remodel of your kitchen appliances with TC Connect while you're also cooking this up and presenting good information for us so that, uh, we understand how do we, how we need to move forward. So thanks for your hard work and your dedication. And thank you for all the budget staff and the auditors, financial services team for their hard work and dedication through this.
Okay, everybody, we're ending the agenda. So, everybody, we're prepared for this afternoon. We're adjourned.